Thank you. Any announcements?
No announcements.
That made it easy. Public to be heard on agenda items. All these people, no one wants to get up? All right, action items. We have A through G. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Budget, Mr. Fink, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Shreezy, members of the board. Following is the highlights and discussion points from the 2018, 2019 proposed preliminary budget that we discussed at last week's Finance Committee meeting. Let me see if I can get this thing working right. There we go. Tonight, we'll look at, as usual, look at the Act One timeline, the methodology and challenges of putting a preliminary budget together at this early time. We'll take a quick overview of the forecast model that we've built, which makes this process a lot easier. Pulling the mic down, press directed. Better? Yeah, okay. And we'll take a look at the high-level expenditures and revenues, and then we'll take a look at the next steps. So, the timeline for the budget has been pulled forward once again due to our calendar layout. The Act requires that the proposed preliminary budget be adopted by February 14th of 2018. And to make this to work with our calendar year, we have to present the preliminary budget tonight. And we'll recommend approval for making it public for inspection with the proper notices. And then we'll put this to the board for a vote to adopt in the January's meeting. Now, clearly, doing a budget this early has its challenges. Of note, two major challenges are the lack of two things. One is current year data, and the second, of course, is what the state budget's going to look like for 2018, 2019. The condensed calendar has us starting the process only a few months into the current year. We only have about four months of the current fiscal year under our belt, only about two months of operating data, so very little to analyze from a budget-to-actual standpoint. So, a little data to go through there, but probably a bigger piece of it is how the 2018, 19 state budget will come out. Always a big question mark considering what we experienced the past couple of years. This past year, it seemed no one really wanted to do anything about the expenditure side of the budget, but there doesn't really seem to be any real long-term revenue solutions either. So, some of the unknowns we're keeping a close eye on for 18, 19 are how the subsidies around transportation, special ed, and the basic education funding subsidy will come about, and also any further changes to pension reform, and if any property tax reforms might be coming our way. So, to set the stage, we're going to take a quick look at our rolling forecasts. Now, it takes us out to the 2023, 24 year because we have some significant fiscal events that occur out there, and also some changes that have taken place. We have, as we all know, executed a new contract with our professional staff, so we've updated our forecast model to include those. And we've also made some assumptions regarding other workforces throughout the district, and updates to employee benefit costs, retirement assumptions, and so forth. So, in looking at some of the data, that's kind of small to see, I understand. This is the world that we live in. Part of the model looks at employee wages as a whole, broken down by category. It also reflects the employer-related costs for payroll taxes, health and other insurances, as well as P S R's costs. Medical benefits continue to typically be around the 21% to 22% of gross payroll, so that's, of course, factored in. And also, the increase in the P S R's rate, which is given to us by the state, not that we have any say in it, for the 2018, 19 year, that rate increases from 32.57% this year to 34.18% of wages next year. This rate changes causes about a 10% cash-on-cash increase in our P S R's costs year-over-year, which equates to around $2.2 million by itself. So, and also note that the 34% number is a preliminary estimate. Final numbers don't normally come out until mid-December timeframe. So, interestingly, at least interesting to me, is this P S R's increase on its own, if we had the same wages we predicted for this current year, would cause an increase in the budget on its own of about $1.1 million. So, something to consider. The next thing we looked at, of course, is the debt piece of the puzzle. This accounts for approximately 10% of the overall budget, which is why we pay so close to it. The good thing about the debt is we kind of know what it's going to be as it's been laid out and fixed. So, we bake this into the model, extend the debt service commitments out in accordance with the schedules, and then we make certain assumptions around any refinancing or other factors that might occur. So, if we look at the debt schedule, how it pans out currently, it shows the district is committed to service obligations, debt service obligations of a little over $14 million a year through the year '22, '23. After this, the debt service obligation falls to just over $8 million. You have heard me mention something called the debt cliff, probably many times now. That's it. So, we're keeping a close eye on that. What's interesting to note, too, is two years after that, there's another cliff, where we fall from about $8 million down to a little over $3 million a year. So, our team is laser-focused on those two major fiscal events. But, looking further down the list, you can see currently, Springford has outstanding debt of approximately $100 million. That includes about $12 million as a portion for the Western Center debt as well. So, that was about 80% of the total budget on the expense side. Now, let's take a quick look at the income side. Historical trends, plus some forward-looking assumptions dictate how the district's revenue is laid out. This is way more detail than you ever want to see in your life, but this is the stuff that excites me, so we're going to go through it. It does. I know it does. This is great stuff right here, so. Revenue trends, Wipper, this is where we do, this is where we really do our heavy lifting. So, it shows all the major revenue areas. It shows a bit of history and how those trends roll forward. For example, real estate assessments, which is the top block and probably the biggest one of all, has an average increase year-over-year of about 1.5% to 2%. Collection, over the past couple of years, because of the improvements in the economy, I'm sure, have increased from about 95.5% to 98%, which is a big jump. Now, that's great for the immediate. What's not so good for the other side of that is that means a decrease in delinquent taxes, which is this year's revenues that we would collect in future years. So, that part, that revenue part will go, or that inventory part will go down. We also have seen some growth in the earned income tax as a direct result of an improved economy. We try not to make too many big changes here. Economies go up and down, and they ebb and flow, and the revenues would in the same path. So, from there, we roll up into what our revenue assumptions and data for revenue worksheet, where we can see the revenue growth projections for the coming number of years. So, we're looking at this year, a little over $151 million in revenue, increasing to just about $154 million next year. That's organic growth. It's not taking into account any changes and any tax implications there. And then, finally, we compile all of this data into our master worksheet, which shows the forecasted revenue expense components. If we focus on that white column, 18, 19, we can see that currently, which is very, very early in the budget process, we're looking at a potential budget gap of about $3.7 million. From here, we can also look forward to see what potential impacts to taxes might be in future years. Now, you'll notice, probably very obviously, that I'm stressing on the word "potential" because none of this is put in stone. This is forecasting 101. So, it gives us an idea, look into the crystal ball of what's coming and what we need to work with. So, basically, what that means is we have a lot of pencil sharpening to do in the coming months. So, might be a little bit redundant, but let's take a look at next year alone. Personnel-related costs continue to be about 70% of the district's overall cost. That hasn't changed. What was mentioned earlier was the P S R's increase by a couple points, which is going to count for about $2.2 million of that gap. This always continues to be a point of concern for me and my staff, as there's nothing we can really do about it, but it's something that we have to make provisions for always going forward. Medical benefits assumes the trends continue as they have in the past, which is about that 21% to 22% of gross payroll. As of now, we're looking at about a 7% increase in that area. We'll be watching those numbers closely as well. So, as you can see, we're looking at just over about $165 million in expenditures next year, which is about a 4.5% or so growth year-over-year. This is right within the normal window of where we've been growing on the expenditure side. And as can be expected, of course, in a service business, is personnel are the biggest impacts on those changes. So, as we explained earlier, in the forecast model, we apply the revenue trends we experienced over the past number of fiscal years. As a result, real estate tax should increase organically by about $1.5 million. That's basically just through expected assessments, which we are trending toward. We've gone over that in finance as well. Nominal changes were made to the state funding piece based on recent trends, but we'll have to wait and see where that lands. And, of course, we have made no changes to the federal side, which continues to be a fraction, less than 1% of our overall income base. So, if we compare and see how this plays out currently based on the assumptions, in the past, we've also made some provisions and used some of the reserve funds, again, laser-focused on those debt cliffs. And hence, we get down to the potential, I keep saying that word, preliminary budget gap of almost $3.7 million. Already talked about that? Okay. We, of course, know next year's Act One index is 2.4%, and our current estimates for referendum exceptions around special ed and retirement of about $1.5 million. So, that adds about another 1.5%. A million is about a percent. So, with the potential for about 3.9% increase if needed. I'm not suggesting we utilize any of that at this time, but rather, myself, my team, the rest of the leadership team head back to our workbenches, wait for more data to come in, sharpen our pencils accordingly, and address the current gap. A quick overview. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Does your long-range forecast, five-year model, anticipate any growth in the district? Is it just status quo?
No, it does. It anticipates growth in relation to the feasibility study that was just completed a year or two ago, last year, I guess it was, right?
By sharpening your pencils, I assume you mean that you know some places you might be looking to perhaps make some adjustments to... Can you tell us where the loose...
Sure, we're right in the beginning stages. It's really early. I mean, as I said in the beginning, the biggest piece of it is we have very little data to go on to see if the budget we're working on, we're using right now, has any traction this year. We also haven't gone through the process, which we will be going through, of putting the budget books together for each department and each building to go line-by-line down every last little thing that has to go on. So, there's a long way to go.
Jim, just once again, what's the increase in the P S R's? What's the, what does the increase in the P S R's look like? I mean, I know it's on the board, but how much is that going to take out of our budget?
That'll take, in the current growth scheme, about $2.2 million.
That's what I was afraid of. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you. Like always, it's a crystal ball. I mean, the state just finalized their budget, what, two weeks ago? And here we are, looking at a budget again for next year. And I know that you guys do a great job of getting this budget down, hopefully getting it down to zero again, if ever possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, student report.
Okay. Good evening. I hope everybody is enjoying their Thanksgiving break so far. Springford's Model UN had their first annual conference on November 11th. They were joined by Methacton and Great Valley. At the conference, they discussed major world issues such as refugee crisis, nuclear nonproliferation, climate change, and many more hot topics. Attention seniors planning to attend college in the fall. You should aim to have your applications completed by Thanksgiving, so this Thursday. If you haven't completed your applications yet, you're not alone. I also need to finish that and put on some finishing touches there, then submit it. Anyway, I hope you all enjoy the rest of your holiday.
Thank you. Curriculum Technology.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on November 8th in the district office. We started out with two good news items that were covered previously, the first being our three National Merit Scholarship finalists, and also to Spring City for earning High Achievement Status in the 2016-17 school year. We moved right into the meeting and talked about curriculum. First, we talked about the Act 339 progress, and Mrs. Bass is heading a team, being trained through the M C I U this year, and is hoping to finish a plan and present to the board later this year on what the progress is and the strategy for that plan. In-service is tomorrow for all staff, and the curriculum office is offering a variety of workshops for teachers and staff, and are thankful for those who are presenting, both teachers and administrators. It should be a great day of learning. For the E L A update, Mrs. Gardi said that professional development has been planned, again, for tomorrow based on teachers' needs and data review. Data review has taken place for the 2016-17 data. E L A facilitators met to review the 16-17 data, and meetings occurred with third and fourth-grade teachers at Royers Ford to review P S S A data and look specifically at what they continue to improve. Professional development continues to occur in October for eighth grade, and the T D As and ninth-grade constructive respond. Monthly professional development occurs with fifth and sixth-grade teachers and the T D As regarding disruptive thinking, classroom visits, and continuing to support Journeys' implementation. For the math and science update, Mrs. Rockland talked about the Math Night and what a great success it was. Approximately 167 students attended with their families for a total of about 250 people. Guided math PD workshops and meetings continue on a weekly basis at Oaks, grades one through four, working with Royers Ford also in grade three and four math teachers to refine their practices based on findings from the 16-17 P S S A data. Implementation of the five-to-eight math resource is going very well, and the C P M implementation of the upper-level maths is also going well. They're continuing to work with the five-and-six special ed math teachers to help with implementation of the new resource. And science resource review is taking place for grades five and six. Three vendors will be presenting with a decision, hopefully, to be made in mid-December. For technology, E-Rate class in Harrisburg for networking and purchasing. Mr. Catalano and a member of his team attended a six-hour seminar in Harrisburg about all the ins and outs of the E-Rate and how it works, and we are eligible for a 40% rebate for the majority of this purchase for networking. So, we need to make sure that we understand the procedures completely, and the seminar was free. That's always a great price. The cameras for nine through 12 in October, as you remember, the board approved the second and final part of the camera project for the nine-to-12 building. Simplex was scheduled to be onsite as of the 14th to go over the project plan and start the project. The next item that was discussed is the phone update. The current phone system has been in the district for many years, as we know, and is approaching replacement. They are hoping in technology to get at least two more years out of the system and are continuing to do homework on a replacement and potential systems. Mr. Denard had recommended Skype for Business, and they've done some investigating and potential solutions with the vendor and have come across a few roadblocks, such as paging, broadcast messaging, headsets, and use of personal phones. The technology department will put out an R, sorry, an R F I in the near future to see if other districts are using this solution and what issues they have come across. They will continue to explore other options as well, and when the time comes for the new phone system, in order to make the correct decision. Next, there was a new time clock procedure discussion. The team, the technology team investigated potential time clock procedures that would eliminate the paper cards at Springford. Yes, they still use paper cards, still do. The paper time cards are significant time and waste of money, and the technology teams feels it would be more efficient way of utilizing time and money to do this electronically. The technology department, H R, and the business office have demoed three solutions to solve the problem, and they have chosen a solution, frontline education, and this is on the agenda for approval in the month of November. As discussed last month at the meeting, Mr. Shreezy mentioned having this room investigated for the A V system, and Mr. Catalano has a technician coming to look at the A V system in the Herda Learning Center, so they will also be doing an assessment of the cafeteria as well, what the needs are and what we can do to better utilize and make this space efficient for use at board meetings. Lastly, in the technology and curriculum section, the high school project. Training for all cohorts happened in September, October, and will be continuing in November. Administrative training has also taken place and will continue this year, and the project is off to a great start. Additional training on digital content took place for the hybrid learning, and everybody's off to a great start. And our next meeting will be determined after the reorg in December. Any questions?
Did you say that they had E-Rate training for six hours in Harrisburg?
Yes, sir.
What could they have possibly talked about for six hours?
Dude, he has binders that are this big, that's what I heard.
You don't have to answer it.
Right?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy, but, you know...
So, if you're going to do an R F I on phone systems, I'm assuming you're not concentrating on Skype for Business, but you're doing an R F I on what other districts are... All right, because you quickly realize that that's not an option, but, I mean, just make sure that you're going across the board as far as different options.
Wouldn't an R F I be to potentially, potential suppliers, not to other districts? That's typically what an R F I is for, you go out to people that supply solutions and ask them for proposals, for information on what they present, not go to other districts to ask them what they do.
Yes, I'm doing both. I'm asking the vendors for information, as well as other districts, to see what other districts are doing, and just doing our homework, because we know we have probably at least two years before we have to do this. We want to make sure we make the most educated decision financially and what's best for the district.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll be on to policy.
So, the policy committee met on October 9th in the district office, and it was probably the most fantastic and productive policy meeting I've been, I've had the opportunity to attend and be a part of.
Did you share it?
Yes, I did. That's not why, but, okay, thanks, Jill. So, we first talked about the student wellness policy, and Dr. Roach, along with Dr. Patsky and Mrs. Germanario, followed up last, from our last meeting, to provide some clarification on the questions on the policy that we had, and also updated the committee on the reasons for the changes and the need to be in compliance due to the school nutrition services audit that will be taking place later this school year. So, the policy was recommended to move forward for a first reading on this month's agenda. So, that's the student wellness policy. Then, we started to talk about the community use of school grounds and playgrounds specifically. Dr. Roach discussed the revisions to this policy, as well as some wordsmithing to help specifically address a few of the items, and to have this policy and the next, which is the use of the all-weather track by district residents. We wanted those to be consistent with one another. The policy was recommended also to move forward for a first reading on this month's agenda. Then, we reviewed that use of all-weather track, that policy, and Dr. Roach discussed the revisions to this policy as well, with the goal to have the policies in line with our current practice and to clarify a few areas that were being interrupted differently at different times. That policy, too, was recommended to move forward for a first reading on this month's agenda, so. Very busy, and that was just the first part of it. Then, we moved on to talk about some of the new business in terms of policy, and we discussed... Just one second.
That was a heck of a meeting.
It was, it was a very good meeting. The policy on sick leave for administration and support, both policies, were reviewed, and based upon the review from last month, we did, again, look for the consistent language on the sick leave for all employee groups, and this policy was recommended to move forward for a first reading on this month's agenda. We also discussed nondiscrimination in school and classroom practices, and Dr. Roach shared an update based upon a conversation with Mr. Fitzgerald, as well as introduced the new P S B A policies. In addition, Dr. Roach provided an overview of the legal reason from the Policy Network flyer sent out by the P S B A. Both policies will be on January, the January 2018 agenda for further discussion and additional work, so we can just make sure everything is updated and that it's reviewed in the new school year, well, in the new calendar year as part of the school year. And that was the same for nondiscrimination in employment practices. So, the nondiscrimination in school and classroom practices and employment practices all are on the agenda for the January 18, 2018 school or the policy committee meeting. We also talked about purchases subject to bid, and Mrs. Davidheiser attended the meeting, proposed changes that are in line with bidding thresholds and purchases that are to be budgeted. Language was added that allows the district to stay in line with all local, state, and federal bidding limits, but does not require a policy change each time a bid limit is changed. The policy was recommended to move forward for a first reading on this month's agenda, and the same for purchases budgeted. So, there were a number, I think there were seven total, that we discussed and decided to move forward tonight. And then, I provided an update on the use of facilities policy and the feedback that I've been working on getting from both property and finance committees, and we are talking about including the, we need to look at the cost that it costs to run both the facility on week and on weekends, and what the difference is there. So, we are continuing to gather information, and when we reconvene in January, we will discuss again what our next steps are to make sure that everyone is on board with what we're looking at there. So, does anybody have any questions? Nothing? Comments? Questions? Okay, so, the next committee meeting for policy will be on Wednesday, January 17th, I believe, because of the holiday, the Martin Luther King holiday. So, we'll meet on Wednesday, January 17th at 7:30.
And the change is actually due to the Western Center bumping back down one week to the second Monday.
To the second Monday.
So, we just automatically move it so we don't have a conflict.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. DeBello, Extracurricular and Finance.
Extracurricular met Monday, November 13th, 2017, 6:30 at the district office. We, as part of old business, there is still conversation. Mr. McDaniel will be reporting on this at the Extracurricular Committee in January 2018 regarding the possibility of adding second teams at the middle school for some of these groups that we have, many kids trying out, and we're cutting. So, we're, there will be a recommendation that will come to the committee, and then that will be brought forth to the board. New business presentations, we have the Springford eighth-grade W S F T V, was presented by Mr. Bowers. Three students presented the purpose and explanation of W S F T V program, daily broadcast to the entire eighth-grade center. Basically, they have three teams of broadcasts, they take week-long stints, and then they have basically two weeks off. Mr. Bauer shared an example of the morning meeting show, the... Mr. Bowers shared an example of the morning meeting show, the morning show, which the students basically went through for the committee, what a show looked like. It was actually pretty interesting. The kids did a really great job. They write their content, along with Mr. Bowers helps them with their content, and for eighth graders, they did a phenomenal job, and I know that many of them have interest in continuing that when they get into high school with the RCTV. We also have a presentation from the library club, presented by Ms. O'Brien and two students. They talked about the committee, basically primarily focusing on both the Reading Olympics and the Makerspace. The Reading Olympics, they have 45 books that they choose from, and then they also got into, at the end of the Reading Olympics, there's a competition that's held, and it's, again, it's really great to see that the kids that participated in this, the book choices that they have, and how they meet each month, talk about the books, give their interpretation, and actually draw conclusions as well from what they feel may be happening in the book as they're working forward. We did get a brief overview of the Makerspace, which is a subgroup of the library club. It's starting now for the school year, and it's an area, the Makerspace area is coming close to completion, and students are using various stations to design and create many projects, and I'll also say areas of interest. With that, the meeting concluded, and we will be meeting also potentially Wednesday, January 17th, 6:30 at the district office. Finance meeting, met November 14th, 2017, 7:30 at the district office. As always, we started off reviewing the executive monthly reports, which brings us through October 31st, which is basically three months into the school year. As of right now, going through each of the reports, we're confident that we're going to stay within budget, although it's still early, but we're feeling very well as far as what we budgeted and what the expenditures and revenue items are coming in. Some of the revenue items are actually above, are above pace than previous years, so that's a good thing. And also, we see, and I don't necessarily, all the reports are out on our board site, but there are a few of the budgeted revenue items that are tracking ahead of schedule and possibly coming in a little higher than what we planned, which is always good. We did have a brief conversation regarding the electronic timekeeping system and how that's going to be integrated into Skyward, but again, Don already talked about that, so there's no point in rehashing that. We also did get into detail regarding the preliminary budget, the forecast review, as well as the presentation that we saw this evening. So there's nothing to report that you haven't seen already. And we had a guest appearance by Ms. Zazowski to come in and talk about the use of facilities. And basically, although we said that she could talk with Mr. Fink outside the meeting, she wanted to make sure we discussed it in detail, line by line, dollar by dollar. He, Mr. Fink and his staff, has presented a full spreadsheet that will go back to the finance committee, and they're working towards understanding what the true costs are at an hourly basis of utilizing the facilities during the week as well as on the weekend. So they're making really good progress there, and we expect that the policy committee at some point next year will be presenting some recommendations to this board for consideration. With that, the meeting concluded at 8:06.
Any questions? Property had an extraordinary meeting, one of the funnest we've ever had.
Fantastic.
It was a fantastic meeting. I don't have the minutes for it yet, because it was such a great meeting that Bruce is putting it together for me, so we'll have it next week, but we had party hats and all, so you missed out. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Cerisi. Mrs. Haney actually stole a lot of what I was going to say tonight, so I will go with a no report, with the exception of saying that next week, I'm sure, will be emotional for you as you're heading out in your last meeting at school board. So I do want to say thank you for all your service. You were here when I got here in terms of hiring me, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate our ongoing professional relationship, and we'll continue to work on getting you, one, off hold, but two, correcting that music to have our Springford students on there. We'll keep working on that.
Thank you.
We can give a round of applause, absolutely.
I'll save my comments till next week. It's like before scoring seven years ago. Yeah, I should have kept the kids till nine o'clock and started tonight, right? Solicitor's report. Yeah, it'll be a doozy.
Just briefly, I'm continuing to work with the administration on the rollout of additional provisions from the school code and how they're going to impact various departments moving forward, so that's really it.
Thank you. Moving on, minutes A and B. Personnel, we had A through E. Finance, A through M. M? Yeah, there's a lot of Ms., but M. Property, A and B.
What are the extra $250,000 in soft costs for B, for the expansion?
Most of that money is actually the escrow money that we have to put up front for like the curb work, sewer work, underground drainage systems, electrical work, any kind of paving, repaving. We have to put that into an escrow fund with the township, and that money sits in there, and as the work gets done, we can pull that down. But most of the time, we wait till the end of the thing and pull it down, so we have to keep paying administration fees on that, and that thing, it sits in escrow account, interest-bearing, and then when the project is done, the punch list is done, then we get reimbursed that money back for the portion that is there held for those improvements. Some of the other fees are maybe for different other inspection fees, soil conservation fees, and stuff like that, but the majority of this here is actually escrow money that we have to put up just in case we would never finish a project. The township can come in and finish the project with that money. It's in escrow account at the township. They mostly do this in the township, so when developers come in and do a project, they do not leave without, like, they build the houses and never finish the road, which does happen, and then they have this money sitting there in account or by a bond that they have to finish the work.
So those amounts are actually in the estimate originally? It's just, this is just the funding, that amount of money that was in...
Yes, this is also built into the construction cost. When we bid the project, this work is also put into bids of the contractor, because they have to do it. So it's also in that portion thereof, but we have to pay it up front to make sure that the township has that money in hold in case we don't finish.
But it's not really an actual additional cost to the total project?
No.
I would just simply add that we are working on the language for these agreements with the township. We might not have it ready, because we're going back and forth with the township, so we might want to make this agenda item, and I could talk to Diane about it, subject to final review and approval by the solicitors' office.
Any other questions? Programming and curriculum, A and B. Conferences, A and B. Other business, A through E. Is there a board comment?
I just want to clarify, when we talk about RFI for the benefit of the people in the audience, that means request for information.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public to be heard. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Just a second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.